Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, featuring candidates for Mankato Area Public Schools School Board. I am Carolyn Dobler, a member of the League of Women Voters St. Peter Area, and moderator for tonight's forum. I'll be assisted by Colleen Jacks, also a member. This forum is designed to educate voters about the relevant candidate views of these candidates in preparation for the general election on November 8th, 2022. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts of edited clips of the candidate forums cannot be used for partisan political purposes. This forum is being recorded in its entirety without an audience on September 22nd, 2022, by KTV at the cafeteria at Mankato West High School. The recording will be available online at KTV, on KTV's YouTube channel, and on the League of Women Voters St. Peter Area website. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. We encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. Tonight, we will ask our candidates questions that have been submitted via email to the League of Women Voters St. Peter Area prior to the event. Questions have been submitted by the public and League members. We screen all questions submitted and may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. We will not ask questions that are of a personal nature and not relevant to the office, or that are designed to make a statement rather than solicit information. We usually receive more questions than we have time to ask. If your submitted question is not asked tonight, or if you want more information, please contact the candidates directly. As forum moderator, I have the final responsibility as to which questions will be asked. All candidates have been invited to this forum. Candidates will each have one minute for an opening statement. Those candidates unable to attend have been invited to submit an opening statement, which I will read. Following the opening statements, each candidate will be given 1 minute 30 seconds to respond to a question which I will read. The order will be rotated, and I will give the order for each question as we go along. Candidates will have 1 minute 15 seconds for closing remarks at the end of the forum. Our timers tonight are League of Women Voters volunteers Cindy Olson and Patty Christensen. They will hold up a yellow sign when 15 seconds are left, and a stop sign when time is up. If a candidate is mid-sentence when time expires, they will be allowed to complete the sentence. We have asked each candidate to be specific in their opening statements as to the reasons they are running for office, and what unique qualities, skills, experience, or expertise they would bring to the job. Let's begin our candidate forum for the school board for Mankato Area Public Schools. And I will start with reading the opening statements from those candidates who were unable to attend tonight. The first statement I will read is from Kristy Shuck. "Good evening and thank you to all who are attending tonight's forum. I wish for you all to know that I would have liked to attend in person, but had an engagement previously scheduled with my family prior to the scheduling of this forum. I was elected and began serving this district in 2010, and in that capacity have been fortunate to participate in a variety of district committees, including energy, community education and recreation, wellness, transportation, meet and confer, and student advisory. I have negotiated with teachers, principals, and our secretaries groups, served on PTOs, PTAs, and Bridges BAC Council, and chaperoned everything from high school band trips and Lancer tours across the country to playground recess mileage clubs, lunch lines, and pow-wow education days. The breadth of this experience, working closely with students, staff, and families, has helped to inform me of the constant challenges of public education. I know this to be an asset for our community and hope you see that value too. In the community, you have known me as a small business owner, a girls-on-the-run coach, a Live Strong and Group Exercise instructor, serving on the Vine Board of Directors, engaging with our community through Envision 2020, being appointed to the City of Mankato Planning Commission, volunteering on the Riverfront Park Task Force, serving as a prejudice reduction workshop facilitator for the Greater Mankato Diversity Council, and being an advocate and eager fundraiser for multiple nonprofits throughout the years. The depth of this involvement illustrates my commitment to connect with our diverse community as I seek to engage in inclusive ways with our constituents." The second statement I will read is from Crystal Wells. "Hello, all. First, I would like to apologize for my not being able to attend tonight's forum. I've taken on some extracurricular family duties that has rendered me unable to be there at this time. In my journey toward my next chapter in life, I want to help and influence, and make a lasting impact that will extend beyond my lifetime and even my child's lifetime. I have an educational background in psychology, and I am currently working on a graduate degree in industrial organizational psychology, and plan to obtain another in developmental psychology. I've also worked in hospitality and customer service for 16 years, and feel the combination of both backgrounds could offer a unique and fresh perspective on the needs of parents and children today. My previous work skills and education combined offer attributes of warmth, genuineness, conscientiousness, proactiveness, leadership, organization, decision-making, problem-solving, and interpersonal skills to the Mankato School Board. These attributes and skills will help guide me in being a part of making the best-informed decisions that I and the entire board may be faced with for the parents and children of our community. In our ever-changing world, it would be nice to be a part of progress for our children, and I feel I will be able to achieve that being a part of this board. Thank you all." And now we will hear the opening statements from the candidates who are in attendance. The first round, we will begin with Jamie Oninson, then Patrick Baker, Darren Kern, Carrie Pratt, Jody Sap, Shannon Sinning, Brienne Vogt, Joel Hollerick, and Ernie Nielsen. And we'll just start at one end, so.
Hello, my name is Jamie Oninson, and I'm on the ballot for the four-year term in November. In my professional life, I'm an IT director in the financial services segment. My family and I live in North Mankato. I've got three girls, a junior, a first grader, and a fifth grader in the middle. And this year, we're welcoming in a senior from Norway as an exchange student with us. My wife and I like to be as active as we can in the community, especially around kids and their opportunities. I'm currently a member, or a board member, for the EduCare Foundation, on the Mankato Basketball Association Board, on the Peppers Board, a member of the Mankato West Booster Club. Where my wife's president. I am going down this journey. I tried it two years ago. It was not pleasurable, but I'm trying it again through some people that have been trying to talk me into it. I'm concerned about the number of kids that are leaving this district. I'm concerned about our teacher turnover, the morale of our teachers, and just the general classroom management and direction of our school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Baker, and I was appointed to a vacant position on our school board in July. I applied for the vacancy because I'm a big believer in public education. I'm a product of the Mankato Public Schools. My wife is a teacher at West. My two girls are just a few years away from entering kindergarten, and I'm employed in higher education. I see the immense challenges and stress our school staff and children are under, and know how crucial ensuring their well-being and success will be to the future of our community. Public education in our district faces significant challenges, and I'm running to ensure that our district embraces the opportunities that lie before it. Our schools deserve to be and need to be great. But it's easy to say that. To get there, we will need competent, experienced leaders on our school board that know how to get it done. I've been involved in education workforce policy and community leadership for 15 years, including at the National Governors Association, Vice President at Greater Mankato Growth, and now leading education and workforce policy for the nation's largest nonprofit university. I spent my entire career working with public governing bodies to effectuate changes that benefited people. My experience will allow me to effectively work with the public, the school board, and the superintendent to get us where we need to be.
Hello, Darren Kern. It's an honor to be here tonight. I am a public school educator. I've worked in public education for over 30 years as a regular education teacher, a special education teacher, a building-level administrator, district office administrator, and superintendent of schools. Public education is my passion, and all kids are my passion. The key word meaning "all." It's easy in today's society for us to complain about what public education does not do, and we do not spend enough time focusing on the success that public education has for the many, many kids who have graduated and have gone on to do great things. As a public school educator, I understand that this is a tough job, and we are losing educators in droves, and positions are hard to fill. Families are frustrated with school districts and are moving and are district shopping, and we need to ensure that kids in Mankato or public schools have a world-class education, and we celebrate the things that our schools do, rather than focusing on the things that our schools cannot do. Thank you.
Hi, I am Carrie Pratt, a former Mankato Schools math teacher, a believer in public education, and an advocate for all students. I'm running for school board because we need an educator's voice and perspective on our school board to address the number of students and staff leaving our district, the safety of our students and staff in our buildings, and how we can emerge from the pandemic better than we were before. I'm a teacher who has taught through the pandemic, experiencing firsthand the challenges and changes brought to education. I've taught where cell phones, social media, and gaming are a constant distraction for students, where mental health needs have skyrocketed, and staff shortages have amplified the needs of our students. I have firsthand experience in the day-to-day and minute-to-minute operations of a school. The best way to move our students forward is to support our teachers, and to best support our teachers, we need to have a teacher's voice at the table.
Alright, hello. I'm Jody Sap. I am... I've been on the board. This is, I'm in my 21st year. I, when I first ran for the board, I, my two children were in, were sophomores and freshmen here at West High School, and they are now, they're in their 30s. I don't know how that happened. Just, I can't be that old. Um, I... I'm running for the school board, and it may seem ridiculous. I thought long and hard about, before I filed. I bring a wealth of experience, historical knowledge. I have had an opportunity to sit on almost every committee that the district has, not everyone, but almost. I spent six years on the Board of Directors for the Minnesota School Boards Association, where I was, had the opportunity to do work statewide. And I currently sit on the South Central Service Cooperative Board of Directors. And I love everything that I do, and I'm passionate about education. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Sinning, and I live in Mankato, Minnesota. I've, I'm actually not a campaigner. I lost in the same election Jamie did, but we're back. We're resilient. I'm not, I'm not a campaigner at all. I'm a doer. So this is, I'm a fish out of water in this deal right now. But I will say I have a daughter, a senior at East. I have a son who's a sophomore at East. And I have a five-year-old who will be in the district for kindergarten next year. My qualifications would be, throughout my career, my education has been accounting, finance, and insurance. I'm currently a commercial insurance agent. And I, my, one of the big things I bring to the board, currently I was appointed in July and seated in August, the current school board, is that I'm a leader. I've been to a lot of nonprofits and my church. I've been on councils, boards. I'm always either the president, or treasurer, or both. And I bring, bring a lot of wealth of knowledge. That minute goes quick. So I'll wrap it up, and I'll do more in my closing statement. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brienne Vogt, and I am running for a four-year term. I'm a North Mankato resident, and I have one daughter who's a junior here at West. And then we have an eighth-grade daughter who is actually going to private school this year. I was born and raised here in Mankato and attended several of the area schools, and I concluded my education with a bachelor's degree in dietetics. I am invested as a parent and understand the struggles facing our young generation. I am running for a spot on the board because I believe our district can do better for our students, staff, and community. Our students and teachers face numerous challenges every day. We hear about continued disciplinary safety and mental health issues. Assessment scores show our students are only around 50% proficient in reading and math. There is a lack of transparency with our parents on these issues and what is being taught in our schools. What does our future look like if this continues? I believe that we can work together to see positive change in our district. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joel Hollerick, and I am running for a position on the, in the two-year position on the ballot. And why do I want to run, why do I want to be on the school board? Because I want to make the world a better place. And I think a way that I can do that is by serving on the school board. I've been called to serving my entire life, whether it's been volunteering at church or in my community, chaperoning field trips, or helping to coach one of my kids' sports teams. And when you see a need, sometimes you just feel called to step up and get involved, and I see a need. We're losing students. We're having a hard time retaining staff. We're scrambling at the last minute to get enough staff into the classrooms to just have somebody in each room. And I want that to change. I've got four kids in the district. I've, bring 20 years of experience in banking and finance. So an outside perspective and a different way of looking at some of these problems, and I think a different way of solving them and addressing them. Alright.
Thank you very much. My name's Ernie Nielsen. I'm a graduate of Lake Crystal Welcome Memorial High School. It was Lake Crystal High School when I graduated from it. My wife and I both grew up in Lake Crystal. My wife is a 27-years-old teacher with the school district here in Mankato, currently at Roosevelt Elementary. Both of my children, my son and my daughter, graduated from East High School. We're, we have had an enriched life that was enriched by working with companies that provided us the opportunity to work internationally. I want to emphasize the fact that I want to bring a partnership together with the local higher education facilities, as well as the businesses, and bring that international growth. Thank you.
Thank you. The order for our first question will begin with Darren, then second will be Jody, third will be Carrie, fourth Shannon, fifth Ernie, sixth Jamie, seventh Joel, eight Patrick, and ninth Brienne. And you will have 1 minute 30 seconds to answer this question, so you get a little bit more time. So we'll start with the first question. "As a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in classrooms?" And we'll start with Darren.
I think the first and most important thing a school board member can do is make sure that members of our community and parents feel heard. Everybody has a voice, and they need to feel heard. Our schools today, quite honestly, are driven by standards. I began teaching in a time when standards didn't exist, and long for those days, to be honest with you. I believe it is very hard for people who sit in an office, not in a school office, who make rules and regulations and dictate what should be taught in public schools, when most of them, or many of them, have not been a public school educator and don't understand what it is to be in a public school classroom, nor understand how and what we should teach our children. With that being said, standards were created to create, to create an equal playing field for kids, and so that all kids had equal access to the same opportunities, both learning and outside of the classroom. And so standards do serve a purpose. I think educating families and parents and community members on what those standards are is very important. You can read standards and not understand what they mean. They're very complex and difficult to understand. And engaging a conversation on what a standard truly means, and why it's taught, and what needs to be learned by kids is critical and important. Without that conversation, there's a lack of understanding, and people again form opinions and judgments without adequate information. But again, feeling heard and having a voice is important for all people in a public school district.
I guess I would first of all, just listen. I mean, listening is important, understanding their concerns. I would assist them in getting in touch with whoever they needed to, to speak to, to have their concerns alleviated, or at least informed on. Darren's right. Standards have become all and everything, and test scores. When I first came on the board, there was, it was, we were just moving into that, the standards and the importance of assessments and the graduation tests and things like that. And all very important. It's, it's important to prove that we're doing the job that we're supposed to do. But I think that the problem with assessments is they're one day, one moment in time, and it doesn't necessarily equal what the student is made of. It doesn't say everything about them. I don't think that what is taught has changed that drastically in the last 21 years. I think that over the last two years through the pandemic, I think that parents have awakened to to what's, what's being taught. Some of them don't have accurate information. And so connecting people with with the people with the knowledge is important. And parents can go watch what's going on in their classroom if they want. They have a right to opt out of anything. Who do I give the phone?
Having taught in the schools, Mankato Public Schools, for the last 13 years, I can safely say that standards are really the basis for everything that we are teaching. I would say to parents with concerns about what is being taught in the classroom, to really look into some of the standards-based grading that has recently come about. I know that there's been a lot of pushback on that from parents because it's not the typical A, B, C, D, but it really helps us see what students are able to do and where they are at in that learning. As, as a former teacher here, I would encourage parents to get into the classroom and to see what their students are doing. I think most teachers are really excited about having parents in the room and having them exposed to what's going on. I can speak for myself in teaching at Prairie Winds over the last two years that we have had some very difficult conversations, and that before those lessons were, were given in, say, our advisory time, we always had parents looking at those lessons beforehand. We were very upfront about the fact that we were going to talk about some difficult conversations. But at no point have we ever said, "This is the way it has to be," and students always do have an opportunity to opt out. So I would say, really, it's about the Minnesota standards, and again, it's about reaching out to classroom teachers because we do want to share what's going on.
I'm not a former teacher like Carrie, or a current educator like Darren, so my, my hat would be mostly as a current board member, but mostly as a parent. That's where I learn the most from what's going on here. But I'm a good listener. I talk to a lot of people. That's what I do all day. I'm in lots of things. But one thing I've noticed in, by talking to my kids, and my, my kids' friends, and their parents, and teachers that I'm friends with, is there's a lot of wildly different opinions about what's actually being taught, and what's accurate and what's not accurate. And I think we really need to focus on that. If you hear somebody is teaching something, or whatever they're talking about, you need to do your due diligence and find out from someone that would know, a teacher, or someone that's more involved outside of a teacher, what's actually being taught. And I guess my big thing as a parent, because that's where all my experience comes from in education, is I think parents really need to step up. When my kids come home every night, we talk. My two high schoolers, my five-year-old, it's a little more difficult. We talk about what they're learning, what they're not learning. Do they agree with it? Do they not agree with it? You can learn something in school, and you can be totally opposed to it, or you can agree with it. It's up to you. I'm raising independent kids that know what they believe and what we believe as a family, and I think parents need to do a good job of connecting with their kids and being held responsible for doing the right things with their kids and trusting their kids. Their kids are going to go to college, or trade school, or do something else after high school, and they're going to hear a lot of things that they don't agree with and that they agree with. And I think as parents, you got to train them up and prepare them for that because they're going to be on their own, and you'll just be their parent from a distance, and they will be coming out of the nest. So that's my opinion on that.
I've not had the opportunity, as several of the people on the board here have expressed in terms of education. My experience has been also as a parent, and both of my kids went through junior high school and high school here. Prior to that, we were overseas, and they had the experience of going to grade schools, both in Europe and in South Africa. We brought that back to the community, and there was a tremendous amount of support in ISD 77 for their education and their background. My interest in the board, in going forward in terms of standards, is to help the students and the staff attain the goals that are current. There's so much change in technology, and the way the world is communicating, and the way the world is migrating, and the way our social structures are changing, that it's a very important part of education, that they're experiencing firsthand to this day. And I think it's a way to enrich their educational experience.
I'll start by saying I'm a really strong believer, believer that parents matter in the education. And when I say that, it's not to be in the lesson plan and be writing lessons for teachers or anything like that, but it's to be involved. And I, part of the, the, an issue with the pandemic was that parents were not involved with their schools for two years. And I think that isolation and driving them out of the schools really started a lot of these concerns. Now, hopefully, we're able to get parents back into the classrooms, not to help teach, not to help drive curriculum, but to be there and feel part of the process. You know, being involved and feeling part of what we do is as important as anything, and then also bringing that home. One of the great things I've seen recently with teachers is signing off on, on projects, on notebooks every night when they come home. It gives me something that I can talk to my kids, too. Because if oftentimes without that, I ask them, "What do you do today?" "Oh, nothing." You know, so it's, it's, it's part of the process to just get parents involved, not with what's being taught. I truly believe that parents, as long as they feel like they're valued and their input is listened to, they do not want to get into, "We're reading this book, we're not reading this book," or "What's being taught in schools," but just to be a valued member and to be heard on what's being taught in their classroom.
So if a, if a parent was asked, said to me that they were concerned about what's being taught in the classroom, I guess my first question would be, you know, tell me more. What, what are you hearing that's being taught, or what are you concerned about? You know, if, if the concern is about the lattice method versus the window method, or if we're reading Catcher in the Rye, or Tom Sawyer, or something like that, you know, I guess I would just need to know kind of more specifically, like what, what is your concern? Is it the material? Is it the way the material is being taught? Or is it just that, you know, it's something new? Like when my kids told me about the, you know, the different methods of math, I was like, "Why are you, why are you not just doing it the way that math is done? What do you mean, there's different ways to do math?" But part of that was from being involved too, and asking, and, you know, to kind of echo what a lot of people have said, I guess. You know, it does require that parent engagement, and maybe that's not the easiest thing as a parent. You know, if you've got a challenge of, of working second shift, and you can't call the school to find out, then I guess I would try to dig into it if I could, and find out what, you know, address that concern, if it's with a specific class, a specific topic, school, whatever it is. You know, if, if that person didn't have that time or that opportunity. Otherwise, yeah, I would say, you know, as others have said, give the, give the school a call. Give the teacher a call. Send an email. Ask your kid for, you know, something from class that shows what they were talking about, so that we can, we can really address that concern for you.
Perfect. Well, thank you for the question. Since July, I've had the chance to deal with this, right? And, and manage some of these issues that come in from, from parents. And first and foremost, it's
And first and foremost, it's to listen, understand what the concern is. And then ultimately, board members are facilitators, right? It is our job then to facilitate the right conversation with the right people in our district to make sure that we are addressing that, that parent's particular complaint. More broadly though, the, the question speaks to communication and public engagement from the school district and from our, our parents and our kids and, and, and teachers as well, right? And I, I think there are a lot of areas for improvement for our school district in the communication side to make sure that our parents are, are more engaged in our schools. I mean, Jamie's absolutely right, the pandemic did us no favors there in terms of, of parent engagement. And I would love to see our district be more deliberate about getting parents back involved in our schools because they are such a fundamental part of the, the, you know, beyond the just the reading, writing, arithmetic that makes our schools tick, right? And makes the educational experience for our kids worthwhile. So that's something I'm really focused on. You know, I know the board did some of the coffee and conversations with parents and, and community members last year. I know we're trying to redesign that and I hope we come up with a design that really allows for more effective public engagement between the board, but also parents at large in our community.
If a parent came to me with concerns about what is being taught in the schools, I would want to listen and understand what their concerns are and encourage them to reach out to the teachers, to the administrators of the schools that their kids are attending. And this is an area where, as a parent, I would have loved to know that there was options to opt out of certain curriculum and things like that. I did not realize that. And so I just, I feel like more communication from the district is better than less. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. For our second question, will, first will be Joel, second Darren, third Jody, fourth Briann, fifth Jamie, sixth Ernie, seventh Carrie, eight Shannon, nine Patrick. And our second question is, as a school board member, what is your role in supporting a diverse, equitable and inclusive environment in the Mankato area public schools?
All right, so what is, what is my role in supporting a diverse environment? I guess I think to make sure that when we say diverse, we're, we're capturing every way in which we can be different from one another and we can be diverse. So that we're talking about, you know, economic diversity as well as maybe fluency in English or, you know, male, female, whatever it is. And I guess my role in it is just to make sure that every teacher and is, is teaching for every kid in their classroom every day. That, you know, they're trying to make sure that people who are, the kids who are struggling are, are getting the help that they need, that maybe contact is going home to parents if they need it. That if there's a challenge with, with communication, we're looking for creative ways to do that, maybe helping to, to translate if that's needed. Or, you know, like I said before, parents who might work second or third shift or, you know, parents where kids are in two different households, to make sure the communication is going to each parent, if, you know, if that's the case. And then it's just making sure that the teachers know that they've got the tools and the support from the administration where if they feel like they're, they're not reaching a kid or a certain, you know, kid seems to have a certain challenge, that they can figure out a way to, you know, to teach to that kid. The high performers, the, the ones who are struggling, the special needs, the AP kids. And just to make sure we've got all the resources for all those kids.
Thank you. I think to start, it's important to note that the role of a school board member is governance and policy. It's, it's not to micromanage and be in a teacher's classroom on a daily basis talking about what lesson plan should look like. My role as a school board member is to charge the district administration superintendent and administration of the district to make sure that all kids, as Joel mentioned, there's lots of different forms of diversity. But my role is to make sure that the administration of the district is providing equal access for all kids to what's happening in the classroom. We need to come to a time where divisiveness in schools goes away. There's enough divisiveness in our communities and in our world. It is not something that belongs in our schools. And so we need to remove that as a barrier to why kids don't have an opportunity to learn. And I stress the word "all" because it's a phrase that we use in education all the time, "all kids." And then we don't do anything about that, we just say that. And so as, as a school board member, I will ensure that the district administration provides equal opportunity for all kids to learn regardless of whatever factor they're, they're dealing with, whether it's income, ethnicity, gender, all of those things. All kids are important and we need to provide equal access for all kids.
Darren hit it on the head when he said that the role of the board is about policy and governance and not to micromanage and, but it is to lead from the high level and hire a superintendent that will, will carry out what, the charge that you give him. We want to make sure that our teachers look like the students they're teaching. We've been working on hiring diverse staff, that's, that's important. I don't care if they're teachers, if they're custodians in the lunch line. It's all important, but they, they need to look like the kids. The kids need to see role models, they need to go, oh, you know, maybe I could do that. Or maybe, if not that, maybe I could, I think it's just important. Public education, I think as a whole, was designed and formatted to reach the most students. But there's always students that are above the curve and there are students that, that struggle to get anywhere in that curve. In equitable is about giving both ends of that, what they need to get as high as they can go. And it's, it, it's different for every kid. I mean, a, a child in a life skills class, what's going to be successful for them is nowhere nears what it would be for somebody who is in the gifted and talented program. Thank you.
My role in ensuring a diverse environment as a school board member would be to make sure that, like Jody said, that there is people in the schools of all color nationality so that they're, the students feel represented. I, I don't believe that our school district should be having groups based solely upon certain things like gender or race. I feel like that just further divides our community and it's not something that our kids need to be a part of. They're innocent and let's try and keep their innocence while they're young. Thank you.
I guess I'll echo what, what a few others have said here. I would focus on all two. A lot of data points to the economic features as being one of the biggest drivers of the gap. Well, it's, you know, we, I think we focus on race a lot with, with good intentions. But there are many other folk, you know, factors that, that represent a diverse student population that we have. I am a strong believer that we can raise from the bottom without affecting the top. And I don't know if that's always the focus. I do have a, a personal belief that a lot of what we've undertook here in the last couple of years has been more symbolic than, than some guts behind what we're doing. I, I know that I've reached out for stats and any proof that anything's working and it's, it's been hard to find. I would like some measurables to see what we're doing, again, raising everybody up. And, and a focus on everything. I, I, there are some very specific things tied to this that leads me to believe that the symbolic nature of, of what was undertaken the last couple of years. I, I know in this very high school, there's a group of students, mostly minority, who do not go to class all day long. They did not last year, they don't, do not this year. If we cannot get our kids into class, we have no chance to, to, to lessen the gap. No matter who they are, the first step of anything is getting there and having them present to learn.
Thank you. I'd like to emphasize some of the comments that have been made already. I think encouraging students through activity and engagement and involvement is very important. I don't think it's important for the board, the role of the board, to necessarily direct to those teachers and to the, to the staff how to do this. I think what we need to do is listen, as was emphasized several times during this. And I think there are great, great opportunities as we move forward. But micromanaging the superintendent is not part of that solution. I think encouraging kids both academically as well as socially to engage. One of the best experiences I've seen is with my grandson, who was a very gifted and talented student. He was offered the opportunity to skip one or two grades when he was in grade school. We chose not to do that, his parents chose not to do that because the social importance of him acting as a mentor and supporting students that were a little less gifted in the, in the program brought great rewards to him and to the school. Thank you.
I believe that every student has the right to learn something new every day. And with that, we as a board need to support those who are working the closest with those students, the, the teachers, the staff at our schools. In supporting them, it means that we are giving them the resources they need to differentiate their lessons because as we've said, students are coming in with different needs. Those may be academic needs, those may be different lived experiences. And we have to meet them where they're at and help them move forward, whether they are behind in reading or they're way far ahead. So what we as a board can do is help support those teachers with the resources because teachers only get one hour a day to plan, not even that. And they have to make their lessons accessible to all students in all, with all cultures, all different language, I mean, there's a lot going on. So we as a board need to find ways to support the teachers with the resources and the time so that they can do what they do best, which is teach students, connect with students and bring in the rich, diverse cultural, culture and diversity that we have. So I, I do believe that as a board member, it really comes down to how do we support the teachers with the initiatives and the plans that we have.
I want to say, I guess, echoing some of the others, that I just want every child in our district to have a chance of the same, a good chance to have a good education and be something that other kids in other districts are intrigued by District 77 and want to, want to, maybe want to come to our district. We're kind of the, the district of choice as far as our programming, what we're doing, how we're lifting everybody up. But I want to say, you know, from a board perspective, I guess I'll just say personally how I feel about it. Yeah, I'm just a curious person. I, I want to get to know anybody that's different than me, especially bad, because I just want to see what makes them tick. And what I've learned being on the board is I, I thought I had a preconceived idea of who are the exact groups we would need to help to get everybody that equal chance. But I've had a lot of stories even from some parents with gifted and talented kids that have had concerns from that area, kids of all abilities. Some people would say disabilities, I'm in an open arts Minnesota board for theater for all abilities. I think that's a group that we don't pay enough attention to yet. There's just so many different, people think of just one or two things when they think of all the differences in kids and families. There's many, many facets all over the rainbow, you know, that are different. And we just need to be curious enough to get to know people different than us and then support them. I think that's a parent thing too, not just a board thing.
Well, so let's talk about why we're talking about this, right? If you look at our district in terms of the assessment scores, individuals of color, students of color and students of lower socioeconomic background do not perform at the same level as their white affluent peers. That is a problem. And when I look at it, it is an economic imperative that we fix that. You know, our community has a talent shortage. We have a workforce shortage. We cannot as a, as a community from an economic perspective, certainly from a moral perspective, permit such gaps in opportunity for the students in our district. And so when I think about, you know, governance, right, and, and the board and what's our role? Certainly making sure that we're, we've got the right mission and I know the board has done some work there. But what, to me, what we have been doing hasn't really served us well because the gaps are still there and if anything, they're bigger. And so I'm thinking about new models for how we deliver education. I'm thinking about enabling new technology to support teachers in delivering that education. And I'm thinking about fundamentals too. I mean, I think Jamie's right about there are behaviors in our schools that are detrimental to learning. And if our, our, our classrooms are being disrupted, no one's learning no matter what your color is or what your background is. So we've got to go back to high accountability and standards for our kids as a key component as well.
Okay, so for our third question, our order will be first Jody, second Shannon, third Briann, fourth Patrick, fifth Joel, sixth Jamie, seventh Ernie, eighth Carrie and ninth Darren. And our third question is, Mankato area public schools have seen a decline in enrollment in the past couple of years. What steps, if any, should the school board take to address this loss?
I think school choice is important. I think it's awesome that we have so many great districts around us and in Mankato with the Loyola Catholic School System, the Lutheran School System, the people that homeschool, the Charter Schools, the Riverbend Public School. Choice is important because every kid is different and every family is different. The COVID pandemic upended the world and changed it for a lot of people and that's okay. It's okay that they went somewhere else that they felt they could be served better. I think that attracting kids back to school and new kids as they move in, I think that we, I think we have to get better at telling our story. Our teachers are doing amazing things in the classrooms and the school district is a good place to be. You'll find somebody in every school that, that cares about every kid. And kids connect with different kinds of personalities, but I, I, you know, from a financial perspective, yes, it's concerning, absolutely. But I'm not, I'm not devastated that people are looking for other options. It's okay that they're, they want to choose. And I think if we just, we keep doing what we do, I'll leave it there.
I, I would say on this topic, I mean, it's one of my main topics and I know it is for other people too. I mean, losing over 500 students the last couple of years means we're losing over $6 million in revenue from the state. That's not sustainable. That's just, we're a growing community, growing business community, we're a vibrant community. We have buildings that need repair, we have, we're sitting in one right now, West High, where there's a vacant pool with office furniture thrown into it because it was condemned. You know, we don't have single access, secured access points on West and some of our elementaries. That needs to be done in my opinion. We, we can't continue doing what we're doing. It's just, it's like a business, if this was a business, we'd be in some serious trouble right now. So my opinion on this is that we need to find the root of the problem, talk to everybody that we need to talk to, if that's community business members, that's parents, that's teachers, figure out what all the problems are, because I don't think it's just a couple. it's just a couple, and we need to solve them. We can't keep saying it was COVID. We have to solve the problem because if you looked at this just as a business, we have serious problems. And that's part of the reason I'm involved in this. I'm a business person, and I want to get this figured out.
Okay, the steps I think that the board should take to address the issue of declining enrollment is, I believe that we need to find out why people are leaving. There needs, we don't, we can guess why people are leaving, but we don't know for sure. I believe that we need to figure out why they're leaving. We need to take concrete steps that have measurable outcomes to reverse the trend. And then I just think that more transparency with the parents in the community about what's going on in our schools would really put a lot of people at ease. Yeah, thank you.
Linker, the question, it's an important one, and it's one that I had been grappling with a lot since I got on the board in July. I've been part of a task force as a school board member that has been looking at this issue of enrollment, and we have been coming up with what we call a strategic enrollment plan, which will be the first time our district has done something like that. It's done in higher ed quite a lot, but our district needs to compete, and we need to compete with our neighboring districts. And post-COVID, we need to compete with online options, et cetera. And so that strategic enrollment plan, which I hope to see a draft of in the next week or two, you know, as I look at it, I'm going to be focused on a few things. One, communication. Our school district needs to do a much better job of, of communicating with our public and talking about the things that are going on in our school. We've talked about that a little bit tonight. The other things we need to be focused on are school culture. You know, I certainly hear a lot from parents, teachers as well, about school behaviors, the school environment. It's having a negative effect on our teachers, negative effect on parents, and that's certainly a contributor to our declining enrollments. We need to get serious about, about that. But then we also need to press our advantage on innovation. Our school district has the ability to do things that our surrounding district doesn't. And in that, I'm thinking about, you know, new models of education, team teaching, career academies at our high school. You know, only about 13% of our students in the district participate in some form of work-based learning. I would love that number to be much closer to 100%. And so I'm really focused on making sure that we are providing a higher quality educational environment for our students.
So, yeah, I think declining enrollment is, you know, is a significant concern because that's 500 kids, what, 1,000 parents then, or 500, whatever, saying, there's a better place for my kid to go to school than the Mankato Public Schools. And that, that I don't feel is okay, is for people to look at our school district and say, nope, not good enough for my kid. So part of it, I think, you know, to echo some of the other comments, is, is communication, right, is to find out. I've heard parents, as I talk to, you know, parents of my kids' teammates, or I talk to people that I encounter at work or wherever, at church, and I've heard concerns, and I don't necessarily see those same concerns. I've talked to parents who've, who have enrolled somewhere else. And I think part of it is a lack of communication. And so I think we need to have good discussions with, with those parents, and I think find out from the parents who did enroll, you know, as best as we can try to contact people, look at previous enrollment, and try to reach out to those who have, who have transferred. You know, what was it? If it's small class size, there's not, you know, maybe in St. Clair or in Lake Crystal or something, there's not a lot that we can do with that. If it's safety, I've heard concerns about fights. There is something that we can do about that, you know. So I guess solving the problems that we can solve and doing everything that we can to communicate, if those are, you know, are those concerns really happening, or are they beliefs or impressions because we've lost the ability to communicate in the last couple of years?
This, this is one of the most or the most important issue that I've talked to people with. You know, a good friend of mine used to say, strong communities have jobs, public safety, and great education. Without, if one of those three fall down, the community falls. We are losing kids at an astounding rate, and it's competition, and we need to compete. I ask this question to everybody I could talk to. And when I'm, when I'm out talking around school board, I ask, this is the question, why are we leaving? The number one answer I get is discipline and a lack of discipline in the rooms. People do not feel safe in our schools anymore. There is a culture, I'm stealing Patrick, where I had this before, but there's a culture that has definitely changed, and I think exponentially in the last couple of years, around our schools. The teachers that I talk to, and I talk, talk to them frequently, feel their hands are tied on this. And I think parents are fed up, and they, they vote to leave. I, I can't blame them, honestly, for some of the things that we hear. But it's got to be fixed because it's bigger than just the school. The school's most important, but it's community-wide. Our community relies upon our public education system. We should be, again, as Patrick said, we should be able to offer more opportunities than any other school in this region. We are, we have the resources to do it, but we can't do it without competing. We have to compete and get these kids back.
Again, I'd like to emphasize some of the comments that were made earlier, particularly the comment of focusing on communication. I think every year, there are astounding achievements that students that graduate and contribute to the community and go on to great things and achievements in both college and in the workforce that are not communicated properly or enough in this community. Mankato is a very, very astounding community. When you look at the university, Mankato State University, Bethany, SEC, and what they've accomplished, we're consistently, years and years and even a decade, ahead of other communities and other schools. We're a very enriched environment, very diverse environment, always have been. When you look at what we've achieved in nursing programs and what students have achieved in IT throughout the world, it's astounding what people have achieved that have come through the school system. We need to be better communicators, and the focus needs to be on achievement, not on what's happening in a, in a lunchroom engagement and stuff. We're a great community, and this is a great school system. We need to get back to communicating.
A lot of what I want to say has already been said. This is one of the conversations I have with people on a regular basis as well, especially some of those people who have left our district. And I do strongly believe that we need to find out why people are leaving. We need to be open and honest about the fact that we aren't doing everything perfectly, and we need to hear what they have to say and take those comments and really think about what we can do with those. I am a person who just recently left the school district, and I want to echo that I think the behavior and disciplinary policies that we have have changed drastically over the last few years, and my hands felt tied in what I was able to do in my classroom or in the hallways of, of my school. And so I think that that is something that when the community hears those things, and it kind of gets brushed, like pushed under the rug, or we don't want to really highlight it, I think sometimes that makes parents scared that it's a bigger deal than it is. Whereas I think if we were more open about what is actually going on, we have so many amazing things and amazing opportunities at our schools. We need to celebrate those, but we also need to be open and honest about the struggles. Because I think when we admit that we have struggles or that there's something not going as well as it could be going, the community can rally around that, and we can find solutions. I will also say that I think, I will leave it at that, since my subject is there.
Well, I'll start with the communication topic, and I'll take a little bit different approach than maybe what's been talked about so far. The negativity is going to get out there regardless of what happens. The negative is always going to get out. And as a district, we really need to invest in getting that positive message out, all of the good things that are happening in our schools, because there are a lot of really good things happening, and that word doesn't always get out, and it's sometimes grounded by the negative. I think it's critical that we give families and students a reason to be here, and I don't think we ask the question of why do you want to attend here, or again, why aren't you attending here? We spend a lot of time talking to business leaders and community members, which is critical and important. The voice we don't hear often is students, and we need to invest in hearing student voice more, because they're going to tell you what's good and what's not good in our schools. They live it every day. They know, as a business manager, community member, or a family member, I could have my opinions about what I think is good and bad. A lot of that is based on perception and not always on accurate information. Again, our students know because they live it every day, whether they're five years old in kindergarten or 18, getting ready to graduate. They have a voice, and we need to hear that voice. There needs to be, instilled this, this idea of excellence and pride, that what we do is excellent, which comes with accountability, and I think that's a key word that we need to talk about. But we need to be proud about being part of this school district and attending school here and being members of this great community, and we don't spend enough time developing that pride.
Actually, this, the next question kind of piggybacks a little bit off of what Darren had just said. We're going to do a quick response, just a lightning round here, and I think we'll just start with Ernie and just go around because that'll make it a little bit quicker. And so the question is, name something you think is going well in the Mankato schools. So we'll send this down to Ernie.
I think the most important thing that I see going on right now really is on two fronts. One is the integration of STEM programs at the grade school and the middle school, as well as the high school level. I had the opportunity to work with the robotics team. I've been the robotics judge for several years in the competitions, and I've seen the enrichment and the value that this brought to students, and not only in their school career, but also in their professional career down the road.
So I have a daughter with special needs, and she had maybe the finest human being I've ever met as a teacher last year at Rosa Parks. And so I think one of the things that's going well is there are some unbelievable teachers and who are investing and taking care of, of some of the students that have some of the biggest challenges. I know we need more paras. I know we need more support in those areas. But, I mean, she shined and thrived because of that teacher. So I think that's, I would say, special.
Something that's going well in our schools, I believe, is their extracurriculars. My daughter is a student here at West, and they really encourage each and every student to be involved in something outside of school, to get them engaged with their peers and coaches or teachers, leaders. So, yeah, I think that is going well.
I'm going to flip this a little bit. I think one thing that's going really well in our school district is sitting right here. We have some really engaged, and I think really good candidates. And I'm not, I'm saying that about everybody sitting here. You are all very intelligent people. You're all very fired up, and that's awesome. My coworker, Tom Rexino, I'm taking over our commercial agency at the end of the year, was on the school board with Jody for eight years. And I always said, how'd you go undefeated those two, four-year terms and then leave? He goes, why didn't everybody run it against me? We have like really good people that are fired up that want to do this, right? I think that's great.
Tom was an excellent board member. He's, I think, we have a lot of things. I would agree with everything that they have said. I have always been exceptionally proud of our special ed services. I think we do an awesome job. I also think our adult basic education program is amazing and brings a lot to the community.
I'm going to give a shout out to the teachers as well. I think that we have some amazing staff here in our district who do a lot with little and really can make children want to learn and want to do better. And I know that as a teacher, we live for that moment when kids light up because they see something and they get something. And our staff here in Mankato is simply amazing.
I'm going to echo what was just said. I happen to have been part of hiring of three different staff members in Mankato for this school year, two teachers and one at administrator. I know these people professionally and also personally. I can tell you the process they went through to be hired by the district was a daunting process, and the questions that were asked of me as a reference for these individuals was amazing. So I think what's really going well is the district is committed to hiring highly qualified staff to work with our children.
So, three things. Resilience of our teachers. My, my wife is a teacher, and the last three years has been the most difficult professionally for her. And the fact that she still shows up after this week and after three years is, is a testament to our teachers across the building and across the district. Our community wants to be engaged in our schools and has a history of it, and I think we need to tap in that again. And then our Center for Learning. Our district is doing some fantastic work around early childhood, and the board has made some significant investments in that new Center for Learning building. I am really excited because of all the evidence that shows that early learning is imperative to academic success and getting that going, and that's going to have some good things for our district.
I know it's been said a couple of times, but my, my only answer here is our, is our teachers, our staff. What they've went through the last couple of years, what they're still dealing with right now, they've been amazing. They are the people that talked me into undertaking this. They are the people that I go to and listen to. I think everybody knows yesterday was a very difficult day here. His wife texted my daughter because she knew that she wasn't at school because she's at PSCO classes. I mean, there's a level of caring and passion that our teachers have that, that is the reason I'm undertaking this.
For our next question, we'll start with Patrick, second Carrie, third Darren, fourth Briann, fifth Shannon, sixth Joel, seventh Jamie, eighth Ernie, ninth Jody. What are your top financial priorities and why? And we're starting with Patrick, followed by Carrie.
Well, financial priorities are, we need to stabilize our school's budget. This year, we're projected to deficit spend, I think, about five or $6 million in our budget. That is not sustainable. We are, we are doing it because we, we think we can get over this hump of enrollment and hope that some state funding will come through. But if it doesn't, our school district is going to be in a really difficult position. And it will, you know, our district has cut about 12, 13 million dollars over the last couple of years since the beginning of the pandemic. The next round of cuts would not be pleasant for this community, and class sizes would rise, et cetera. And so there needs to be some really pencil, pencil sharpening on our budget and how to make sure that it's sustainable and that we're growing again as a district. The other thing we need to be looking at is maintaining the facilities that we do have, right? As, as Shannon alluded to, we have a empty pit here at Mankato West, but used to be a pool that no longer. This week's events in our, in our school certainly demonstrate the need for improvements to safety in some of our buildings with secure entrances, et cetera. And there's just some basic maintenance that needs to go on in many of our buildings. And so as a board member, you know, certainly looking at the stability of our budget is going to be number one, and making sure that we, as a community, are supporting high-quality education through investing in our teachers and classrooms, and making sure that we're taking care of the facilities that we have and providing the things that we need to provide at a basic level for our students when they walk through the door.
I agree. We need to get our budget under, under control, but I would say my funding priorities would be to fund the people because people are the ones who work the closest with, with the students. And those people who are working with our students need resources, and we need to fund those resources so that they are rigorous, so that they are addressing the 21st century needs that we have and the changing needs of our students. I also think we need to find ways to fund experiences for our kids, because I do believe that there's a lot that is learned in, in experiences, and not all of our students get those same opportunities. And so I believe, yes, we need to maintain our, our buildings and all those things, but we need to get real creative with where we're spending the money because our best investment are in the people who are working the closest with our students on a daily basis.
I think it's important for a school board to recognize the role of advocacy in, in funding for the school district. First and foremost, equity and financing of schools needs to be priority number one. If you live outside of the metro area, funding looks very different for schools like Mankato. Um, if you live outside of the metro area, um, funding looks very different, um, for schools like Mankato than it does for Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Anoka, Hennepin, for example. Um, the, the proportion of funds that go to those districts compared to funds that come to districts outside of that area is not equal, and that needs to be addressed. Um, second thing that I think is a priority is the cross subsidy, cross subsidy in funding special education. Um, special education is grossly underfunded, both at a federal level and a state level. And what people don't realize is that, um, the general fund picks up a significant portion of those expenses because special ed is underfunded. When money comes out of the general fund that takes away from other programs, um, and other initiatives that the district has, special ed is very important and needs to be funded one hundred percent so that cross subsidy does not affect the general fund budget. Rather than throwing dollars just for the sake of, of throwing dollars, dollars need to be attached to outcomes. And if a program or initiative is funded, it needs to have specific outcomes, so the effectiveness of that financing, um, and funding for that program can be measured.
My top financial priorities would be similar to what Darren just mentioned, um, in giving pay increases when we see our s- uh, standards being met. Um, I think having some incentives to, um, really get those test scores up, et cetera, um, could be helpful. I also, um, think that safety is a top priority, um, on parents' minds, and not all of our schools are adequately secure. Um, if you take West High School, for example, the office is on the second floor. Um, that gives way too much time for something to happen between coming into the school and getting up to the office. Um, and selfishly, I would want, um, money spent, um, on a pool for West High School because my daughter is a varsity swimmer and we don't have a home pool. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, obviously, budget issues are huge for me. We have a huge issue with our budget, and we had a work session a couple, couple weeks ago, had some people from the Twin Cities at a firm come down and talk about all these options with, you know, operating referendums, bonding, things for the future few years. What, what are the options out there? And the main thing that stuck out to me as being in finance a long time is if we don't get our budget squared away and you look historically, we're, our credit rating is going to slip for the bonds. And then you know what happens with your personal lives. If your credit rating goes to crap, how can you get a loan, right? So, we have to get our budget in order and able to keep our credit rating as good as it is or better to be able to do the things we need to do. When you own a home, you have to maintain the home. I don't want to spend all of our money just on buildings, but we have a lot of buildings. I think we're the largest property or owner in, in the state or in the, uh, city of Mankato or second largest, whatever. We have a lot of property, and I've gone through this with nonprofit organizations, Camp Patterson, for example. We let all the buildings go, you know, fall apart. Well, now we're doing this huge, uh, renovation of everything. It has to be all done at once because nobody was maintaining the property. If you have a home and you have issues, you got to maintain it. Um, we just need to think about these things, and I definitely agree over here with we need single points secured access on West and a few of our elementaries that don't have it. That's huge. Nobody would disagree with that. Left, right, middle, doesn't matter. Nobody would disagree with that, so. So, my wife just started, uh, as a third grade teacher in the district this year, and she had to set up a, like a, almost like a wedding registry, like a classroom registry on Amazon, so that she could get some of the supplies and things that she needed in her classroom to help provide the, you know, the most full education experience she could for the kids. Um, so I would like to see some more money go into classrooms, into giving teachers the resources they need, um, so that the kids have everything that they need. I know some of them are, you know, are nice to have kind of things, but sometimes it is genuine needs, um, that either parents are sending to school with their kids or that, you know, teachers are asking for. She's not the only teacher who does, uh, who does that. Um, and so I'd like to see some more money go there into the, into the classroom or, um, and into, again, paras and special ed and helping to lift that up. Um, I, I said it's going well, but I know they're doing a lot with less than what they need. Um, so additional paras, um, in special ed, lead teachers in special ed, uh, more paras in the classroom if we need it so that, that classroom environment is the best that it can be for every student in that, in that classroom, too. Um, reading intervention specialists, math intervention specialists, some of those to help, you know, maintenance on the education is similar to maintenance on the building. Um, you know, if we do a little bit now, we don't have to do big catch-up later. Um, and then trying to keep art and shop and, and those kinds of things, too. Because if we're not educating those trade school kids, we won't have anyone to maintain the buildings.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I, I think this ties back to, to unenrollment. We have a revenue problem, and, and right now, we can't spend money. And Patrick said, "We are deficit spending right now." When you got a revenue problem, you can fix expenses or fix your income. Um, and we need to entice kids to get back to the school, or we are in trouble. We aren't, we're not going to be able to fund anything if, if we continue on the path we're at. Um, that's got to be the number one goal. Competing for students and, and making this the flagship of the area education experience again. Without it, everything is, is kind of a wish, and, and we're going to have a lot of trouble competing, uh, in a few more years if we don't get this solved right now. And I, I just can't, I can't even go further into the financial question with that because we do not have the money to, to spend on, on things that would be nice or would be needed that we don't have right now. So it goes back to me. We got to compete to get students and get our numbers back, or else we are financially in trouble. Thanks.
I'd like to follow up on Jamie's comments. Um, I think it's, it's obviously clear to everyone here that, uh, the current budget situation is not sustainable, uh, in the sta- in the, in the district. And I, I would propose, though, that one of the things we need to look at are other sources of revenue. And if you look around the country and you look around the globe and you look at schools as well as grade schools, high schools, as well as universities, um, and then you also look at businesses. One of the leading costs of any business enterprise today is energy. And one of the things that a lot of the creative businesses have done is they've created distributed energy resources, essentially gone off the grid. Uh, it doesn't matter if you're a car manufacturer or if you're Amazon or Microsoft or a server owner, farmer owner, somewhere, uh, they're all going off the grid, and they're selling energy back to the energy grid for use. Now, in a school district, the use of electricity in particular, or energy in general, is, hits a low point during the summer. This is the peak demand period for any, any, uh, energy company like Excel Energy. And I think we need to be creative in how to form partnerships where they provide a grant or whatever to provide for the school district.
All very good answers on priorities. Um, my top priority is to, to, to grow the general fund balance. Um, and I think that's going to have to be a, a multifaceted approach. If the federal government, um, lived up to their special ed, uh, funding promises, that'd be an extra five-plus million dollars a year to the Mankato School District that we could use, um, not for special ed. And I don't have a problem spending for special ed, but it should come where it's, where the money's been promised to come from. Um, I, I think it's about growing the, the, getting the students back to, to increase funding from that route. It might be more some budget cutting, you know, learning how to work, um, smarter, not harder, sort of thing on a, a, a people sort of basis. Um, I think livable wages for teachers are very, for all of our employees are important, but the amount of money that our teachers make, um, when you consider what we ask them to do and it being a, uh, it is a profession and it is an important profession, we need to make that better. Um, infrastructure, very important. Um, we need to keep the buildings from crumbling around us. Um, and I think that's, that's in safety. That's where I'll leave it.
Thank you. Well, we're getting close to our time, so we'll have to turn to the closing remarks, even though we had some other really good questions from the public. Um, and so, anyone didn't get their question answered, please feel free to contact any of the candidates for that. So with the closing remarks, each candidate will have one minute and fifteen seconds, and the order for the closing remarks will be, first will be Bri- Brienne, second Joel, third Ernest, fourth Jamie, fifth Darren, sixth Shannon, seventh Patrick, eighth Jody, and ninth Carrie. So we'll start with Brienne.
Thank you.
I think it's slippery.
I know. Okay. In closing, I believe our school district is asking for some change, and they're not happy with how things have been in the recent years, and it shows in our dropping enrollment. We need to make our Mankato area public schools attractive once again. Um, schools where parents want to send their children to and a district the community is proud of. In closing, my last statement is, when we have healthy schools, we have healthy communities. Thank you.
Um, wow, a lot of, there are a lot of great ideas, uh, around the table tonight. I, I guess I would say, so, I s- I've spent kind of my whole life around schools. My mom was a second grade teacher, uh, in the district I grew up in. I watched her go and get her classroom ready, um, days before, you know, the school year would start, watched her correct papers all night, uh, write lesson plans, go there on the weekends to put up bulletin boards, um, you know, and seeing the investment that she, she made and that the teachers made and that, um, the parents made and the whole community made in that church, or in that, uh, school. And I said, this has been a great school in the past, and there are great things that are happening here. Um, but again, five hundred students have decided that there is a better o- option for them. So, um, we're clearly not as great as we have been in the past. And I want every kid, right, who, who comes here to have that great education opportunity. Uh, five years ago, it was hard to get a job here. Now, there's not the big pile of resumes there used to be. I want teachers to be proud that they work for this district and the community to be proud of the citizens that we're generating, uh, coming out of our, our schools.
I've enjoyed this discussion very much, and I've learned a great deal. Um, one of the things that I think, uh, most important in this discussion is the funding challenge that lies ahead for the school district. The ramifications that that extends to for both students and families, uh, is enormous. And, uh, if we allow this and we don't accept the need for change, uh, we will continue to go down the road that we've been on for the last two years. I think there's students, I think the staff, I think the administration are all looking for valid change opportunities. And I think they're out there, particularly in the city of Mankato. Uh, I think we offer a unique environment. We need to take advantage of it. We need to have our eyes wide open for this change and recognize that we won't get to where we need to be in the future by continuing to what we've done in the past. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody that was here. This is, I, I'm confident going forward, however this election turns out, that, that we are going to have, um, some significant change, but I, I, I do think we need it. Um, the financial future of, of where we sit is, is important. Uh, it, it has to be our priority on, on what we do next. Uh, this, the school, the culture, everything we do to sell ourselves as, as the place to be, the place to educate our children, safety, all of this has to be at the forefront of, of who we are as a, as a community, because the, the community is our, you know, we're, the school is a, is a huge part of our community. I, look, you know, there's been some thought about federal help or state help, which would be great. I don't think it's coming. Um, we have to solve this locally, and we cannot continue down the road we've been on in the last two years. We, we went down some bad paths the last two years, incorrect paths in my mind. We need some change. Um, it's got to be solved here, and I, I think we got some people that can do that, and I look forward to, uh, to being in that discussion. Thank you.
Um, I think Shannon began the discussion earlier about commenting about the quality of the candidates running for school board, and it's been echoed a couple of times. Um, I want to reiterate that again. I'm very impressed with everybody who's here tonight. I think I'd close by saying the role of a school board and school board members is to be representatives and advocates of the school district. School districts are an industry and a business of people, both big and small. We need to invest in the people in this district. Support our teachers, make sure funding is, is equitable for all people. And that word "all," I mentioned that in my opening statement, and I'm going to close with that as well. We need to stop saying that we're about all kids, that we support all kids, that we want this for all kids. We need to start doing that and making sure that all kids have an equal access to education. We need to listen to our community, but most importantly, we need to listen to our students. And I'll go back to the question that was asked about, um, why, you know, why would you want to be in Mankato area schools? We, we need to hear that from our students. To increase our enrollment, we need to first know how to increase that. And there's lots of theories and opinions, but our students are going to tell us why they come to school here, and we need to listen. And we need to invest in our teachers. Teaching is not an easy job. Anybody who's been a teacher, it's not a nine-to-five job. It is a difficult job, and I'm out of time.
Um, I just want to say once again, like, like Darren just said, that I'm just glad to be surrounded by some really good people that are passionate. That's what we really need. I think that sets the, lights the fire under the school district and, and sets the course forward. But, um, you know, a lot of people think I'm a good talker, salesperson. I'm more of a doer, so this is really is fish out of water for me. My biggest thing is, you know, if anyone's watching this or how many people are watching this and talking to people, ask people in the community, other things I've been involved with, if you give me time to do it, it's going to happen. And I just hope that everybody here isn't talking and we're going to make it happen, because anything I get involved with, I don't rest until something happens good. Um, and I have a track record of that, and that's what I'm going after. I'm just hoping for four years of it. I got six months or whatever appointment. That's great. I really need four years, but I know we all want that. But, um, I just hope everybody is in it to win it and do it, because my track record, if you ask, in all the organizations, the work I've done around the community, you've got, I can give you hundreds of names. When I do something, it changes and it's better, and that's what I want this to be. I don't know exactly how that's going to look four years from now, but it's going to be better and it's going to be done.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all my fellow candidates, uh, for being here this evening. So, when you think about the role of school board member, first and foremost, it's to be accountable to the public, right? Um, and so to that end, I really want to focus on being a quality representative on the school board. Want to bring an open mind, focus on listening, and a commitment to represent this community to the best of my ability. Now that being said, uh, it's pretty clear we've got some work to do on the school board and with our, with our school district. Um, I am committed to working with our teachers, our students, our parents, our district leadership, um, to embrace the opportunities that are in front of our district, um, because we can be great. We have been great. We should be great. There's no reason that this district can't, uh, embrace the tremendous resources that are in this community to, uh, to restore sort of the excellence that we, that we used to be known for. Um, I think the experience that I bring to the table will help us get the job done. And so that's why humbly asking for your vote come November, and appreciate the consideration.
As everybody was doing their, uh, closing statements here, I, I was thinking back to my very first election, um, in two thousand and one, and, uh, we did a K T O E forum with Pete Steiner, and Pete asked me why I thought people should vote for me or something like that, and I was like, "Well, I don't have all the answers. Don't think that I do, but I promise I will work my butt off to do the best I can for this district, for this community, for the kids." And that answer hasn't changed. Um, I love this community. I love this district. I love my school board work. Um, it's not forever, but it is, it is, I have so much fun doing it and, um, make a difference at the same time. We do good work in this district. Our, and I, just, people have talked about wanting to hear from the kids. I'm going to tell you, I've told Superintendent Peterson, I want to see kids at the school board meetings with school reports. I said, "I don't care if they're five years old and telling us what they did that day, but I want to see the kids." Um, so look for that. Who, um, and, and I, I hope I'm, I've been humbled to be a board member, and I hope I'm allowed to continue for- to continue for a final four years. Thank you.
And I will now read.
Well, thank you. I want to say I stepped out of the classroom this past year because I felt that there needed to be some change in this district and I felt that I had the capability to listen to others in our community, listen to the students that I have taught, listen to those, listen to the parents and listen to the teachers with their needs. I feel that I bring a lot of those things to the table, a lot of knowledge of how decisions at this level are going to impact our teachers and then therefore impact our students. I think our district needs to work on its communication, its accountability. I think we need to own up to our struggles, but I think we need to continue to celebrate our successes. I think we need to support our teachers, manageable class sizes, resources that they're not purchasing with their own money and sufficient time to reach out to families to differentiate their lessons and to really make school the best place for our students to learn. Those are the things that are going to bring others back to our schools, wanting to be here at our classrooms because we are doing amazing things. So I ask for your vote as I can bring that teacher perspective to the table.
Thank you. And now I'll read the closing statement from Crystal Wells. Our school systems are some of the most important things we have as a community and as a country. Children are indeed the future and they look to us for learning, security, stability and nurturing. I feel it is our duty as a country, as a community, to provide these things to them and to ensure that they will be successful in future endeavors, not only for themselves, but for their country and community as well. Having a large family with lots of children, 18 nieces and nephews and four great nieces and nephews, not to mention being employed in the past as a caregiver of children, children have become a huge part of my life and ha- having my own has made me realize where my passion dwells. It is what, what it is, what it is, I feel I am meant to do with my time here on earth to aid, nurture and protect our little lives in any way I can. Being a part of the Mankato School Board will allow me the opportunity to be a, a part of a well-functioning group of individuals that understand and strive to build secure and nurturing educational environments for our children. I feel this role would be one of the most important things I've done in my lifetime and this opportunity will give me the building blocks and stepping stones I need and desire to accomplish my own future endeavors for children in need. This would be a great learning experience for myself, along with some challenges in which I am completely ready to take on. I want to thank everyone for listening and for their support and hopefully we'll have the honor and pleasure of serving our beautiful children with the Mankato School Board in the near future. Thank you for your time. And then Kristi Shuck, I'll just reread her opening statement. I was elected and began to serve this district in 2010 and in that capacity have been fortunate to participate in a variety of district committees, including energy, community, education and recreation, wellness, transportation, meet and confer and student advisory. I have negotiated with teachers, principals and our secretaries groups, served on P T Os, P T As and Bridges B A C Council and chaperoned everything from high school band trips and Lancer tours around the country to playground recess, mileage clubs, lunch lines and powwow education days. The breadth of this experience, working closely with students, staff and families, has helped to inform me of the constant challenges of public education. I know this to be an asset for our community and hope you see that value too. In the community, you've known me as a small business owner, a girls on the run coach, a live strong and group exercise instructor, serving on the Vine Board of Directors, engaging with our community through Envision 2020, being appointed to the City of Mankato Planning Commission, volunteering on the Riverfront Park Task Force, serving as a prejudice reduction workshop facilitator for the Greater Mankato Diversity Council and being an advocate and eager fundraiser for multiple nonprofits throughout the years. The depth of this involvement illustrates my commitment to connect with our diverse community as I seek to engage in inclusive ways with our constituents. This concludes our forum. I would like to thank our candidates for participating this evening. Thanks also go to the Mankato Area Public Schools, K T V and fellow league volunteers. To our viewers, thank you for watching. For more information about voting and these candidates, please visit www.vot411.org and remember to vote on November 8th, 2022. Thank you everyone for, for your time this evening. Thank you.